Okay, I'll call the, this meeting is ordered, the committee had the whole meeting for October tenth at six o'clock PM. The meeting called to order and the agenda for the meeting adopted circulated point two. We're going down to delegation three point one. We have, I see two members of the RCMP here with us, so we'll let you present.
So I dragged my boss down, the new inspector Sheldon Hollingworth. I'll let him introduce himself here.
Sheldon Hollingworth, I've been up in Selkirk for about six months now. So I'd be the area commander for overseeing Selkirk, Red River North, and Grand Moray. And then down, down here locally, the senior NCO would be Sergeant Kepkeckert here.
Thank you very much for your introduction. Thank you for coming to visit us. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Checking up on them.
So did you guys all get a copy of the monthly report?
Yeah.
So, once again, our numbers tend to stay similar. Nothing's flying off the paper, which is good. We still have those issues of the thefts and stuff. Couple weird theft files that came up that we're not used to is, we had one, somebody stole a bumper off a truck. We had another one where people stole a hood, fender, and light off another vehicle, which we haven't seen before. So these are kind of unique. So we're watching over stuff like that as well. Once again, it's the new development area, Capulis, where we're seeing trailers being broken into, construction trailers, tools and stuff being stolen. You get that everywhere with construction. We try to do extra patrols. That being said, we can't be everywhere all the time. So we just keep telling people, use due diligence. You know, people are now parking machinery in front of C cans. Even, that's not stopping some of these guys. They're using their pickup trucks to yank the C can away from the heavy equipment to cut the things off. So I don't know what the answer is to stop this stuff. You know, we've had eleven stolen vehicles, six of them, they're left open, keys inside. You know, we keep telling people, don't leave your keys in the vehicle. Because they go around, they try the doors, hey, we found a vehicle, keys in it, they take the vehicle, then they break in, steal tools, fill up the car, head back to the city. So if they don't get a vehicle, they're not going to do other break-ins. You know, we've got to prevent crime from both angles.
Are you finding that those vehicles are found then, in the end?
Yeah, they're usually found in when a pay-
They're just there for a ride into the city?
Yeah, they're usually in the city.
Okay.
Couple cases of stolen fuel, which I haven't seen in the past, so.
I actually have something that, I'll get your email and send you because there's a white Ford truck again. I know lots of guys in the industrial part. There's a white Ford truck again. It's pretty distinguishable lettering on it. That on the weekend he was stealing, you know, pumping out from machinery and semi trucks and stuff like that, so. I'm sure it's the same guy from last year. He's just got himself a different Ford truck now.
Okay. Do you have a picture of my jeans? Oh, you do, okay. Yeah, perfect. Yes, send that to me. We had like a garage broken into, a couple dirt bikes taken out of a garage.
That one was kind of strange too. Because I know the dad there.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, like at five in the morning, he, he said that apparently they were behind his garage drinking, he found out from another neighbor. At five in the morning, and as soon as he left, and they booted, they tried booting in one door, couldn't, and then they booted in the other door and actually ripped it off the hinges. They couldn't get it the other way, but the hinges broke. And then, yeah, then they stole those two dirt bikes there off the last one.
Yeah. You know, we had another like ATV stolen from right in the driveway. Once again, we tell people, don't leave your ATVs and snowmobiles and stuff sitting out in the front yard. You know, lock them up, hide them, because they are easy to steal and they tend to go very easily. We're seeing lots of trailers being stolen, like flat decks and cover trailers. Once again, they steal them, they go do break-ins, fill them up full of tools. We had one last year we recovered, it was right full of tools, stolen tools. You know, people got to start putting trailer locks on the trailer hitches and stuff too. You know, it's not going to deter people, but it'll slow them down and it'll keep the honest guy honest, right? And the only other thing, I don't know if it's come across your desk after the last meeting, that Taylor Coes issue and stuff.
Yeah, I've had at least three emails.
Yeah, so I'm not getting as far as I want to with it. You know, I brought in the inspector on this as well. I've been in touch with CFS, talking to them, trying to develop a different approach to this. And hopefully they can change their guidelines on how they're running that specific place. They have so many houses in so many different places. We're not quite getting the answers we're happy with. We're elevating it from our end. I've been keeping the community members that were at the meeting abreast of what's going on with that as well.
It's gone to our lawyers.
Has it?
At River River Planning. I do have some updates for you, so if you give me your email, I'll, I'll send you some of the updates.
Okay.
Just what people are observing.
Yeah, like they keep emailing me those updates and stuff. And we get a lot of calls there as well. You know, since January of twenty twenty-two, we've had a hundred and sixty-two calls to that residence. So it's a drain on resources as well, right?
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is from CFS perspective that they're supposed to be a parent living at the home. Is that correct?
Well, that's what we're trying to address. Whether it's a foster home, because if it's a foster home, the owner is supposed to live there and be a foster parent.
That's what I understand.
So we're trying to figure out those regulations on how it's licensed and how it's run.
Yeah.
And like I said, we're not getting the answers we were hoping, so we are escalating things. And I think we're getting a bit of a runaround, so that's why we're trying to escalate things from our end.
Okay, so what's next on the agenda here? I should talk to you.
For sure.
And just give you some information of what some of the residents have gone and done some research and made some phone calls. I passed it on to our acting CAO, I've passed it on to Red River Planning, and I've had some more emails coming since. So there's more activity and more things happening, so residents have asked me what more they could do. So you and I should talk.
For sure, yeah. Anytime you guys want to have other meetings, let me know. Like I work Monday to Friday, I can come down anytime, or I can come in the evenings, whenever it's convenient for you guys as well.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
So can you leave me your card before you go?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I'll hand those out before I leave there to you guys.
Okay, good.
Yeah, other than that, you know, things have been really well in the community, so.
I do have a question for you, if I may, Mayor, and that's regarding ATVs. I get a lot of complaints about ATVs. Where are ATVs actually allowed?
That's a bit, they are allowed, they're off-road vehicles. They're not supposed to be on the road. You know, we tend to turn a blind eye when people leave their residences, if they go down their street, you know, hit the ditch, go in the farmer's field or whatever, do their thing. Legally, they're not allowed to be on the roads. They should be trailering them, loading them up, taking them out to some pits or whatever by law. Every small community comes up with these issues, dirt bikes, blah, blah. As long as people come out of their driveway and they go and they hit the ditch and go whatever, quiet, calm, nobody complains, we don't get involved. As soon as they come out and they start ripping down the street, causing noise and causing issues, we get called, then we have to enforce it, enforce the, the off-road act. We don't want to ruin people's fun. We'll go, a lot of times we'll give them a warning the first time around, and they usually smarten up and they're usually good. It's usually people's kids that, you know, they come out and they rip out. You talk to the parents, and they give the kid the riot act, and it usually goes away. Sometimes it doesn't, and then we've got to write tickets.
Okay, so I'll, I'm going to speak to the mic a little bit here because I know it doesn't. So I have a situation on River Springs Drive. There was an emergency access road put in that's gravel, and they are ATVing on that road. Now, it's not really meant to be an ATV road, it's meant to be an emergency access road. We've put two bullards up there to prevent cars from going on because cars were going on. So now we've put these bullards up. The problem is, the little ATVs can fit right through those bullards.
Yeah.
So the ATVs keep coming. So there's a resident lives right next door that's trying to take pictures, trying to educate people. My understanding from ATVs is the following. If you have an ATV, you can drive that ATV on your own property. You can't drive it anywhere else. So I see people ripping down Grassmere Ditch. Is that legal?
You can, if you cross a roadway, the ATV has to be licensed and it has to be a licensed driver.
Okay.
If you're on your own property, you don't be, you can have like, you don't have to have a license, you can drive it on your own property. But as soon as you cross a road, you need a driver's license to cross a roadway. So you can cross roads, you can drive them in the ditch.
You can drive in the ditch?
Yeah.
So people can rip up my ditch?
They can go, well, they usually use the ditch to go into places.
For the whole RM.
We don't really have ATV trails in West St. Paul that I'm aware of.
No. But like you said, the farmer's field.
Yeah, that's all farmer's field, right? But does that farmer want you ripping through his field?
Exactly.
There's a little trail that runs through.
There's a berm other side of the creek right here that you can go all the way up.
Yeah, this Grassmere Ditch, right? But the, the kids that I see on Grassmere Ditch are not eighteen-year-old kids. They're twelve-year-old kids. So they should be licensed, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. A farmer's field, my comment would be if the farmer wants you in the field, sure. But I don't want people coming on my ten acres and ripping around.
No.
So they have to have permission of that farmer to go on that field.
That's correct.
Okay.
So if people are seeing this and if there's issues, we encourage them to call us. And if they can find out where they're coming from, a lot of times people know which driveway they come out of or what development. Then we, at least we can go talk to the parents and address it.
We have another situation, and I think the gentleman lives on Toshack Road, and he's driving a scooter on the highway. You know who it is?
Well, I don't know exactly. The guy's going to get killed because like, he goes like twenty-five kilometers an hour.
Yeah, twenty to twenty-five kilometers.
Down pipeline to Mullard.
Yeah, and it's the eighty, ninety zone, and I almost hit him.
It's very, it's very, very dangerous.
It's very dangerous.
Well, if you can email me his address too, we can talk to him and address that as well.
I don't know which, do you, Peter?
I don't, I don't know where he lives.
I don't know, it's either, next time I see him.
It's every day, multiple times a day. White scooter.
Yeah.
Wearing a white scarf.
He got hit, he got hit last year on Grass, on Pipeline.
Yeah, so he's in that area somewhere. We'll have to track him down, I guess. But, but it's very, very dangerous, and I'm afraid he's going to get himself killed. Because you shouldn't be on a, I don't think his scooter has a license. There's no, there's no MPI on it, so to speak.
It's an electric.
It's a little electric scooter. And I mean, when I say little, this man is probably six feet and the scooter is about that high. So.
Well, I'll let my guys know to keep their eyes open.
Keep their eye open, yeah. And if I can, if I can find something for you, I, I will, because I'm afraid for this man's safety more than anything. You know, it's not, it's not a good thing.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just a couple things.
Go ahead.
Thanks for coming out and welcome Inspector Hollingworth.
Thank you.
With regards to Pipeline just south of Grassmere, a couple of residents have called me saying that there's excessive speeds in excess of a hundred kilometers down that speed. People are trying to turn into their driveways on the west side of Pipeline, and they feel like it's a dangerous situation. People coming up on them on their back rear and nearly hitting them. So just wanted to put that out there that some residents were saying that there's excessive speed that's happening south on, north and south on Pipeline, just south of Grassmere.
Okay.
And then secondly, I have a question with regards to parking on Highway number nine. Is that allowed? Because I see cars parked all the time on the thirty-eight-hundred block of, of Main Street where the west, west acres townhomes. I see like habitual parking there all the time. I'm not sure if that's permitted or not. I know there's a couple of no parking signs installed, but.
There are a couple no parking signs, and I get this all the time. So south of it, there's no parking signs. You can't park on the south side. And then there's the driveway, and then I don't know how far, a couple hundred feet or so, or a hundred feet, there's another sign that says no parking to the right. So you can park on the north side of that.
Okay.
Guys, I've seen lots of vehicles parked there. They're well off, on the shoulder. They're not a hazard to other vehicles, so yeah, they can park there all they want.
Okay.
And I think the signs were set up that way, that people weren't parking close enough to that approach. So when people come out, they could see both ways and pull out safely.
Good.
So, so they can use a highway for overnight parking?
Unless there's a sign saying otherwise, yeah.
So anywhere on Main Street, you can, you can just pull to the side as long as you're outside of the traffic and park your car?
Yeah, unless there's a sign stating otherwise.
Okay.
It's no different than if you broke down on the side of the road. As long as you're off the road and you're not obstructing traffic and causing a hazard, then you're considered safely parked.
So how do you judge that if it's a hazard? They have to be halfway in the ditch?
Well, if they're halfway in the ditch, they're not a hazard to the road.
No, not at all.
It's even better.
Yeah.
Every case is different. Every shoulder's different. We've never had people complaining about people parking on the shoulder until this new development there. And I think the biggest problem with that development is there's not enough extra parking in there. So people tend to park on the road. Like, I didn't count how many visitor parking spots they have in there, but I think there's not enough for what they have. So I don't know what the answer would be.
Yeah.
And I don't think they have room to expand, to put more visitor parking in there, like in that actual development, so.
The problem is they have all their visitor parking at the bottom, and the people that are visiting at the top don't want to go all the way to the bottom of the development to park and then walk up. So they're just parking on the highway. And I talked to one of the guys, the maintenance guys there, and he says that's the biggest issue we're having. Because there, there's been a couple of bad accidents there. So like that one was, someone was airlifted out of there a few months back, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what to say. It's, it's, it's parking, it, it basically comes down to bylaws of where you can park and stuff.
Well, it's a provincial highway, so it, it doesn't really come down to our bylaws. It would have to be provincial.
Well, who put up those signs on the highway? Wasn't it you guys?
It'd be MPI.
Could be MPI.
MTI.
MTI.
Okay.
Yeah, the province might have put them up. So we'd have to go back to the province and say this is a problem.
Yeah, and then tell them to put up different signs or whatever, I guess, so.
Can we ask the people in the hallway to keep their voices down in the street?
But then they'll end up just parking on the other side of the highway. See, I'll have to put signs on both sides and.
Maybe Amy advised me that we had asked, make a request MTI for some signage as well.
Maybe over, no overnight parking. If they're parking there temporarily, it's, it's not necessarily the end of the world. But if they're parking there overnight, that might begin to be a problem. Might be a problem for snow clearing too. If they're coming down the highway and they're, they're parked there, it might be an issue.
Ultimately, they'll be the authority though, right?
Yeah.
It'll be MPI's call.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Okay.
Any other, are you, any other comments?
No, thanks for all your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
I'm trying to make sure I don't speed around here, so. I don't want any tickets from you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Turn it towards, yeah?
In the middle, yeah.
In the middle, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'd be great, thank you.
Great.
So next on the agenda is three point two. We have Dashmish School and King School right there here, okay? By all means, if you could. Who wants to go first? I guess, how you guys want to handle this, because they're here for the.
Manjinder, is it Manjinder? Manjinder was here first, so why don't we let Manjinder go first?
Yes, by all means.
So Inspector Councilmembers, good evening. Good evening, everyone.
So actually, we requested to have thirty kilometers per hour speed limit in front of the school. Because there's some heavy trucking going at the, to the Ponida Road, and they're pretty fast sometimes, so.
Especially loading and all of that.
So that's.
If you're going to speak, you have to come to the table.
Yeah, yeah, especially, but I think it.
Come together. We know you both.
Thank you. But I think if the speed limit has to go, it doesn't have to be morning or afternoon, it will be the whole day, Monday to Friday, right?
To the mayor, and over to our acting CEO and CEO, is that road, Holmes Road, not a provincial road?
It is, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry. Holmes Road is a provincial road, but the legislation allows us to put a reduced speed school zone on a provincial road.
Okay, so we do have the ability and the authority to do so?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah. So what you're finding is when people are getting out of their cars, letting the kids out to go into school, people are whipping by.
Yeah, even the buses go into the school and come out of the school.
Yeah.
Like sometimes those big trucks, they're pretty fast.
And they're coming from right behind you, right?
From Ponida, yeah, it's industrial at the back, so they just go in, back and forth from Ponida. So even if it's like a small stretch in front of the school door, that would help.
So if council agreed to put up the signs, which I don't think they would have an objection to, but you know, we have to, we have to vote on it. How would you monitor that? Would you be calling, you'd have to call the RCMP if somebody's speeding, right?
I think we could do that.
Correct. It would be enforced from the RCMP.
Yeah.
Yeah, can, we can do that, and then we have some patrols in front of the school, they can look into it. But I think when the sign will be there, people mostly know that it's pretty heavy fine for that.
Hopefully.
So, because we, because for the VINEPAC, right, everybody's kind of aware of the school signs. And I know when they came in, it was a bit hard, but now everybody knows, so. But we can obviously call it.
So to the mayor and to the CEO and acting CEO, would we then, if we put, if we put these signs up, then we would inform the RCMP that we put those signs up?
That's correct.
Okay, and then they would have to monitor that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a quick question, just for clarification. Are you asking, I see Holmes Road, but are you also asking for part of Ponida and Second Street as well? Is that, because there's no stop sign there.
No, I'm just asking in front of the school on the Holmes Road.
On Holmes, okay.
Yeah, just on the Holmes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So not, not on North-South Street?
And, no, I think no, just in front of the school where the school property ends.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go from the start to the end of it?
Yeah.
So are you asking for a thirty kilometer hour zone?
I think that would be ideal if we could do it. Because that's kind of, again, in, with every other school. So like people know it's a school zone, that's what we, what we have in all, most of the schools.
Yeah, it's fifty.
Okay, yeah, it could be, like it would be better than eighty or ninety, right?
It's posted seventy, all that road is seventy, but usually trucks are like.
Eighty or eighty-five, ninety. We would, we would request for thirty, but if it's fifty according to the bylaws, then we would be okay with that as well.
Well, Mayor, I think that we can set the speed limit, and I, I'll, I'll refer to our CEO, but I think we can set the speed limit to whatever we want, no? Okay, yeah, our acting CEO or CEO is fine.
I, I can speak to that if you.
Sure.
So the, the legislation provides the, the low set of speeds that you can change a reduced school speed zone to. And it's reflected from the original speed. So on Holmes Road, for example, we can reduce to thirty kilometers, and that's what the bylaw is proposing.
Okay.
Okay.
So if it was a hundred, then you could drop to fifty. If it's seventy, you could drop even further.
There, there's guidance in the legislation, so we follow that.
Okay.
That's all I was going to say, I remember there was guided, there was limitations in the, in the, in it, from whatever it was originally set to.
And we'll also have any more questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Yeah.
Should we wait or?
No, we, we can't vote on it today.
Okay, okay. So we are good to vote on it?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night.
We have Susan from King School?
Yeah. Hi.
Just state your name and.
I'm Susan Zilkey, the principal at the King School. And I'm here to also ask for a reduced speed zone on Capitol, okay, is it Capulis or Capellas?
Capulis.
Capulis, okay, Capulis Road, Drive. My situation's a little bit different than theirs. As you know, our new school is placed quite a bit back from Capulis. So our students, our younger students, K to eight, are dropped off by the bus or by parents at, along the building, which is substantially back from Capulis. But what I'm concerned about is my high school students aged thirteen to seventeen are making a continual walk to Dairy Queen and Pizza Pizza down the road, and they're walking down the middle of the road as high school students do. And the speed limit there is seventy kilometers, and it's a very high traffic on that road, and people do not slow down. So I would be, you know, I would like to see a reduced speed zone all the way to that little mall where the Dairy Queen is. But that is not directly in front of our school property. But ideally, I'd like to see a sidewalk all the way down that road to the mall for our students to walk on. Would be asking for a reduced speed at this point.
Mayor, if I may.
By all means, Councilor Clever.
The problem is you're all, there's also businesses between you and, and the Dairy Queen. So I'm a little bit hard pressed to say to those businesses, okay, you just crawl along there because there might be some people there. So I, I would be saying to your students, you need to stay to the side of the road, don't walk in the middle of the road. I mean, we can reduce it, but that long of a stretch, I, I wouldn't be in favor of. I'd be in favor of reducing it in front of your school.
Yeah, well, that would be a good start.
That'll, that'll help, but to impose that upon the businesses that, that have been there already for quite a while, a little tough.
Yeah, and enforcement of speed on that road? I haven't noticed any enforcement. Is, is it because there's a school now, will there be more enforcement?
Well, once we reduce the, this, this speed limit, then we can let, we can let, we will let the RCMP know it's been reduced, it's entered there. I don't know if they would actually monitor that. Would they monitor that?
They should.
They should.
We'll make the request, and they should, they should be monitoring it.
Yeah. They, they like giving out tickets, so. I'm sure there'll be a lot of.
Well, they could give a few out there.
Yeah.
Councilor Shetty?
I believe NTI had a, from the school, it's so many. Hundred and fifty meters. Yeah, there were so many meters that extends both ways, so.
Sure, well.
So we don't set, like, that's not set by us, so it goes a hundred and fifty meters both ways.
That's from the edge of the property line?
I think it's from the, where the school, like somewhere around where the.
I think, I think it's the, yeah, the edge to the boundaries of the school ground.
A hundred and fifty meters on either boundary?
From, from the boundaries of the school ground, yeah.
That would be quite a distance.
Quite a distance.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, if you just look at where West St. Paul School is, you're coming half a dozen homes this side, half a dozen homes the other way from the school, so.
Yeah, that would be quite a distance. That would help, for sure.
Got any more questions, Councilor? Okay. Thank you for coming down and explaining what you need and why.
Thank you for listening to me.
So next on the agenda is Sam Hyman. Is he here?
Sam is here.
Manitoba Herd, Ringette.
Hi, I'm going to just, in the hot seat.
State your name.
My name is Sam Heineman.
Okay, so go ahead, start with your presentation, please.
So again, my name is Sam Heineman. I'm a resident of the Trails of West St. Paul. I'm here today representing the Manitoba Herd in the National Ringette League as the assistant captain of the team. I was recently chosen to represent Manitoba on the herd as one of seventeen players for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. However, I also have teammates who grew up and live in the West St. Paul area, and one who currently actually teaches at West St. Paul School as well. We're a group of young adults, university students, coaches, instructors, and young professionals. An inspiring group of athletes who balance academics, part and full-time jobs, and giving back to the communities by coaching young teams. With West St. Paul being one of the fastest-growing municipalities, and my personal favorite, I'm looking to you guys for support. I'm here today to provide our team sponsorship proposal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. As women in sport, we're fortunate enough to play ring at an elite level and travel across Canada. We're passionate about promoting women's participation in sports. To compete at the highest level, we face significant financial challenges, particularly in terms of practicing and travel expenses with each individual paying. To compete at the highest level, we face significant financial challenges, particularly in terms of practicing and travel expenses, with each individual paying upwards of eight thousand dollars a year to play. Ringette, deeply rooted in Canadian culture, presents a unique opportunity to inspire and empower young women through athleticism, teamwork, and leadership. It's a game that not only fosters physical well-being, but also cultivates life skills that resonate far beyond the rink. So in this endeavor, I'm seeking sponsorship support. Your contribution would directly impact our team, and in return, we offer prominent recognition through promotion, social media, and events. Um, so I did send out my sponsorship proposal, um, as we do have four levels of sponsorship, so we have bronze, silver, gold, and platinum.
Got any questions, Senator?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, was this the Ringette team that did some Canada Day stuff as well, or?
No, our team was just formed, um, at the beginning of September.
Oh, so you just formed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how many members of your team are from West St. Paul?
So, um, two of them grew up in West St. Paul, two of us currently live in West St. Paul, and another one teaches at West St. Paul School.
So two of you are residents?
Yeah. And it's, we're a Manitoba team, so we have athletes from Portage du Prairie to beyond Steinbach, so seventeen of us total, yeah.
And are your parents from West St. Paul?
No.
Heideman's are not from West St. Paul?
Um.
I know.
I'm married into Heideman's. Um, I'm from Selkirk originally, but I've lived in the Trails for the last two and a half years.
Yeah, okay. There are Heideman's in West St. Paul, too. You didn't know that? Okay.
Councilor Shetty?
We'll talk later.
Okay.
So through Herd, is, you're promoting Ringette, so it, it's something that you would, would you consider promoting it in West St. Paul, too, like to bring in?
Absolutely, I, I was actually just looking at the, um, West St. Paul website, and, um, and just growing up in a small town, I understand, like, how difficult it is to get a lot of athletes together in a, a smaller place, but West St. Paul's growing, and I'd like to one day see Ringette being under the list of recreational activities in the area. I'm gonna live here forever and, um, plan to have kids one day, and I'd obviously want my kids to play Ringette, if I have a daughter, so.
That's all, just to wonder if you would look at any promoting, promoting it through our recreation?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Right, Councilor Cliver?
Yeah, just to thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, how much of sponsorship have you raised so far?
So I'm not the head of sponsorship, um, but every player's going to their own municipalities, companies they know. Um, the season for the whole team is gonna cost around a thou, a hundred thousand dollars, so any little bit helps. Um, but I don't know the total right now, I'm in charge of fundraising, so doing that separately.
It's about a hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, it's eight thousand per player, yeah.
That's amazing. Okay, thank you.
And have you, have you approached any, uh, businesses in West St. Paul?
I haven't yet, um, but I plan to. Um, yeah, I haven't thought too much about it, but I, I probably should, yeah.
Yeah, there's some businesses that would probably help you with your sponsorship.
I go to Utahia a lot, so I should probably go there.
What's that?
Utahia.
No, but there's our, there are a lot of, uh, businesses as well in the industrial area.
Yeah, I'll definitely look into that, thank you.
That you should probably, at least give them a letter.
Mm-hmm.
And say you're looking for sponsorship, because that's really where you, you'll probably get some.
For sure, thank you.
Yeah.
So your team is from all across Ma, all across Manitoba, so do you have a location that where you play at?
So we typically, yeah, we typically play at Seven Oaks, and that's usually our practice ice as well. Um, but this, for September, they have one of their plants shut, shut down. So our Manitoba, like, our home hub has to be at the Iceplex, the Hockey for All Center this year, but typically, we do always play at Seven Oaks, which is nice and close for us.
Oh, okay. So you don't go to other communities to play, do you, at the, like, go to Selkirk or Stonewall or?
Uh, we also practice at Oak Bluff, so in that area. Um, and then we do exhibition games and feature games at various tournaments and things like that.
At different locations, or, or you do, okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you for your time and for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
I appreciate your consideration.
We got the.
You have that, okay, perfect, yeah.
We'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So next on the agenda is four point four one, tender of the track loader with the five-foot plow and sidewalk plow. I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions at that bar.
Well, did the CEO wanna comment on it at all?
Yes, certainly. The, um, this is for the procurement of a track loader with the five-foot wide sidewalk plow, the existing, uh, uh, or currently, the sidewalks are cleared with a plow with a six-foot wide plow, this does damage to some boulevards and, and sodding in and around the areas, so the idea is to replace this with a, um, a proper-sized, um, uh, front-loading plow. The, um, the, the community continues to grow, we've got over four point five kilometers of sidewalk now, and, uh, that'll continue to, uh, to grow over time. We've got a total budgeted amount for this procurement of, um, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, this is gonna be coming in closer to a hundred and nine with some additional options. These options include the, an air ride seat, uh, turn signals, and a tailgate lock for both, um, safety and, uh, and vandal proofing for, um, I guess vandal mitigation. In any case, um, the overall price, again, is, uh, just over a hundred and nine thousand, just under a hundred and ten thousand, um, with GST and TST included. So the recommendation is to proceed with the procurement.
Can I go ahead, Councilor Campbell?
So, they went with, like, one of the, the UTV instead of an actual skid steer, I'm guessing, by the tailgate, uh, comment here, which I find a little bit strange. I didn't read the tender, um, I just, I, I thought that I would be had talked about it that budget time that they were gonna be doing, getting a skid steer with a plow on it for turning sidewalks. Instead, because we already have a UTV that they could have just put a plow on, right? We have that, we have two of them.
Yes.
Is that not, you know, it, isn't that the con, conversations that we had, everybody?
Well, that's what I thought, too.
It was gonna be an articulating, uh.
Well, I, I, it was gonna be a track skid steer from what I, from, you know, because we said we could use it for other projects. This is, this is just basically a UTV, which we already have two Bobcat UTVs, that they could just put a pot for a snow blower on.
That's what they're using, it's too wide.
The machine's too wide?
Machine's too wide, it's actually riding on the grass up toward where the sidewalks are in the new developments.
Maybe we can get some clarification, uh, for the next meeting on that.
Yeah, I, I, like, I mean, we, we talked about it a budget time, we talked about a track skid steer, that's, that's what I remember that we were gonna be looking at, because it says, a track loader?
Yeah.
A, a track loader means a track skid steer.
Yeah, I have that comment here, uh, skid steer plus plow and plow.
But then, when, where, where it talks about the locking tailgate, that is one of these UTV type of, uh, you know, a, a skid steer doesn't have a tailgate, so.
Okay, so, um, yeah, it's a, um, it's a, it's a compact track loader, what I can do is I can go back to some more detail on that for the meeting.
Do you have a brochure or anything there?
I have a spec.
Yeah, even if, maybe if we just pass it along council here quickly.
Just to see.
Start with Peter, because he's the expert on this.
Well, I hope it's not a sidewalk. Oh, so it, it is a track skid steer, okay. I, I think, I think that, I think it's just the back door typically doesn't have a lock, so they're calling the back door, just its tailgate, I think is what they're.
I think, I think the idea is, is, in terms of locking the tailgate, it's, uh, to lock the, the engine panel, I think, to avoid vandalism?
Yeah, I think, I think that's.
I think that's, I think that's what the intent is.
Yeah, it sounds like it's the UT, like you were saying, the UTV one that we have.
Yeah, there's no, uh, there's no picture, but I, I know what a T four fifty is, so, a, a T four fifty is a track skid steer, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't need any further clarification.
Okay.
If, uh, any of the other council members just wants to Google Bobcat T four fifty, I'll come up with a way with what it is.
It's just a, yeah, it's just a, it's a Bobcat.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay.
There's very few companies make one that's only sixty inches long.
And that was the problem with what they were using, is it riding on grass?
And the quote, and the quote, whoever bid on it last time, I think, was New Holland, and it wasn't actually sixty inches, or maybe.
Water?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this.
I trust, but Peter's the easy expert on this.
So I guess just a matter of.
Any other questions, or? I guess, I just, uh, was wondering if we could just do a bit of a change, I just wanna have to run a fight, because, you know, they have the, um, the equipment at a hundred and five thousand, then they got an option, and it, when I read this, it, it seems like we have no choice but to take the hundred and nine, but I'm wondering if our, um, recommendations could sort of break down into three parts, one, two, and three, and include the options as the third one, so that we can decide which ones we would like. There was no mention of, um, seats when we were talking about the, uh, capital plan, so this would be an addition that I can see.
But we did budget up to a hundred and.
Budget?
Up to a hundred and forty thousand.
Up to a hundred and forty.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but, you know, I guess that's where, I'm thinking there should have been some more specifications of what's seen, because a hundred and forty thousand is, it's, it's a number that doesn't mean that they can spend up to that much. They should tell us what they're gonna buy.
Yeah, and, and so I think, I think, I think the idea is, is to, to include, uh, these options may not have been in the actual spec. Went to tender, and, and those are the detailed specs that would go to tender. Um, by including these options, I think what we're doing is we're making sure that we have, um, um, a safe, uh, type of seat for the operator as well.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, you.
Go ahead.
You or I or any of the operators wouldn't wanna sit four, or five, or six, or plus hours in a, in just a spring suspension seat. Air, air seat is, is a must, and they, they, they price these pieces of equipment with lower specs to be able to sell more of them. So the air ride seat is a, is an upgrade, but it's a, it's a, it's a must for, if the guys are gonna be in it for any period.
And, and, and for clarification, again, that, um, uh, I misspoke, the air ride seat and, uh, these options were in the spec and were in the tender. They were priced as extras because they're over and above the base model, so I think that's, um, uh, the way it's presented in this report. It, uh, it appears to be an optional provision, but it was an option that was specked as part of the original equipment.
Mr. Mayor, so we, we put in our spec that we wanted an air ride seat, et cetera?
Yes.
And they didn't include it in the price?
They did. They've got their base price plus the three thousand five hundred, or three thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars for total.
Yeah, so tech, technically, they didn't, they didn't have it in the bid price, they had it as an option, which is kind of.
They're still meeting spec?
I, I don't, I don't agree, well, it didn't meet spec at the price, right? They had to have it as an extra. You know, if you wanted to meet spec, you have to buy these other items to make it meet spec, right?
And, and, and so the bid to make spec is a hundred and nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this, and this does come with a snow blower, correct? This is not just a bucket, it's bucket, bucket and snow, a snow blower, or just a plow?
Uh, just a plow, I believe.
They were just asking for a plow.
Five-foot sidewalk.
That's all they were asking for.
Okay.
It's an expensive four fifty.
Okay, any other questions? None? Okay, so now we'll go down to the next one, four point four two, our shared medical Manitoba, uh, medical, um, medical first responder service agreement. I guess, um, is someone gonna, can you speak to it, or?
Yeah, certainly I can. Um, this is, uh, basically, um, a recommendation to enter into a, um, medical first response service agreement with Shared Health of Manitoba. Effectively, this is, is really, uh, a service agreement that is required, uh, annually for the, to fulfill our licensing requirement with, um, Manitoba Health. And, uh, there have been these agreements in the past, but there's no material changes to this agreement. Uh, in the past, the agreement had been with the, the Interlake Healthcare, um, Service, this has been now moved to, uh, to Shared Health and, uh, and, um, the, the agreement itself hadn't been renewed since about twenty-four, I think it was twenty eighteen was the last time it was renewed. So this is a renewal of that agreement, which will now be renewed on an annual basis to, uh, to maintain our license with, um, shared, or with, um, Manitoba. This is the, for the provision of first response services by the fire department, uh, and, um, authorization for them to do so.
Okay, anyone have any questions? So I guess they're talking about in this agreement to have, um, licensed paramedics, that's underneath that new ruling that they're coming out through the College of Paramedics?
Uh.
That's what I read in here.
That, that this is, this is, um, this, this is to provide, uh, this isn't for the provision of licensed paramedic services, this is to provide medical first response service. I think the, I think the expansion of services for paramedic service is separate.
Go ahead.
A question with regards to this, does this cause any financial impact, uh, to the RM?
Um, not substantively. There's, uh, there is no financial recovery from Shared Health. Um, these are, these are skills and trainings, uh, skills and training that the, uh, the, the fire department currently has and is able to apply. So this, um, this enables us to, um, to, um, provide that service under the, uh, under the terms and under the license with Shared Health.
So let's just follow a question, the basic, or a comment, this is basically just a status quo of what we have continuing now?
Yes. Okay. No substantive or material changes.
If I may?
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Cliver?
My understanding, too, is that the, uh, any wages that are incurred when they go over to Rockwood would be paid by Rockwood, is that correct?
Uh, that's the, uh, the next report.
Yeah, okay.
So in this agreement, it does talk about, um, licensed paramedics through the College of Paramedics.
But what, why, why are you asking that question?
Because that's what's in the agreement, and that's new.
Yeah, well, I, I believe that, uh, our fire department, other than you people, are all, are all licensed, from my understanding. Is that correct?
I don't know what the old agreement says, but when I read this agreement, it seems like they're, uh, they wanna have certain things in place so that when they get the call, that they know what to send out, because it, it does require that we have a, if, if I'm right, it talks about a, um, non-transport medical responder service, um, vehicle, and there's supposed to be one for every vehicle. Uh, they talk about the, uh, College of, uh, Paramedics and licensed paramedics through the College of Paramedics. So this is all covering all of that, so I'm not too sure how far it, it goes. I understand the costing, it's, the costing is probably the same as what we have now, we're paying our fire department.
The term, the terms are the same as existing agreement.
Yes, okay.
There is, there's no change to the terms, this is, this is really a form, a formal change to agreement from the Interlake, uh, uh, Health Authority to the Shared Health. So the terms are, the terms are materially unchanged.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions? Okay. Okay, next one is. Next on the agenda is. Four point three, right, from Rockwood, the understanding of, uh, memorandum of understanding with Rockwood, uh. Anyone have any questions on it, or?
Well, with respect to the, Mayor, with respect to the, uh, emergency responders, I mean, they would have to provide emergency responders, we're just needing. We're just aiding them at this point, is that correct?
Yes, in, in, in the case of a larger situation where additional resources are required, this is a mutual aid memorandum. These memorandums exist with other municipalities. We have one with East St. Paul, St. Andrews, St. Clements. We, we have, we actually have one now with the RM of what we're from, Rockwood. They've just asked to update this and revise this. In the event that an emergency circumstance occurs in, in any of the, the surrounding RMs that we have a, a mutual aid agreement with, any of us, or any, any RM can respond if able, presuming that whatever the circumstance is didn't significantly impact the neighboring RM. They can respond, they can deal with the situation, and then all costs are then built back and recovered by the, the aiding RM. And the same holds true, if we get into a circumstance where we need to call upon aid from another RM as well because our services are overwhelmed, again, all charges are, or all costs are charged back to us.
Interesting.
The advantage is, of course, is you're able to deal with much larger circumstances without having to be resourced for sort of catastrophes of, of any imaginable magnitude.
It makes me wonder if, if RMs could actually share medical first responders. Because if you're overwhelmed and you don't have enough medical first responders, could you call in your mutual aid and say, hey, you guys have some extras, can you send them our way? Instead of having to train everybody in your fire department to do medical first response?
Well, at, at that point, usually, usually the mutual aid agreements are for situations that are substantively, are, are very substantive in nature, right? And, and you wouldn't typically draw upon maybe municipalities unless absolutely necessary. One, they have to be stationed and ready to deal with situations in their area. And two, the response times are gonna be, are gonna be substantively higher as well, right? So you, you, I mean, the key, the, the key, the key to emergency response is response time. And, and if you're waiting for a responder to come from St., St. Clements, for instance, that, that may not be, may not be sufficient.
Okay.
I was just curious, what, what, who does West St. Paul have mutual aid agreements with? You said East St. Paul?
East St. Paul, St. Andrews, St. Clements, and Rockwood.
Rockwood, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so we got, then we go down to four point five point one, Request for Service. Got to look at it. Anyone have any questions on the Request for Service?
I have a colleague.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Cliver.
Well, our CEO is fairly new. I know, he's not even been here a month, so pardon me if I kind of rag all over this report. I've had some, Councilor Paktikann and I have had some outstanding issues on Northumberland that just don't seem to get cleaned up. We've had, I've had, I have some issues at Grassmere that don't seem to get cleaned up. I have some issues in other places where things just don't get cleaned up. And they're, they're basically derelict vehicles and businesses running out of residential areas. And I have brought this to attention of our bylaw officer numerous times. I've been promised numerous times that something would be on it. Nothing's happening. So when I look at these service reports and I, I go to look at, like, say, bylaw enforcement, I don't see anything here for derelict vehicles. So I, I'm saying to myself, well, where's that complaint? Where's this complaint? I can't see it in the report, I don't know if it's been addressed. And I know it, I do know it, that it hasn't been addressed by us, because we continue to have problems. And it just keeps, you know, it just keeps getting dragged out and dragged out and dragged out, and nothing's happening. I, I, I'm at my wit's end at this point. I don't know what to do anymore. You know, we have residents calling us and saying, you know, this is not getting done, this is not getting done. And I would say, Councilor Paktikann, have you been working on that one for about a year now?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be nice, I mean, I know residents, it is frustrating, and, and certainly residents have rights. But at the same time, it'd be nice to know where things were on a timeline and on a periodic basis. Because there are ones that are, that do stick out in people's minds. And so it'd be nice to get a general update of perhaps some of the challenges and, or where things are at.
We get constant phone calls, and it looks like we as counselors are doing nothing.
Yeah.
That is not the case, we are constantly asking, constantly.
As an update, we have made progress on, on a handful of properties thus far. There's definitely more to do, and there's more work to be done. There has been progress on Northumberland, there has been progress on Main Street, and, and as well at Everlast Memorial. So there has been progress at a handful of properties, and we're continuing to make progress. So we're aware of the concern, we're working to address the concern, and, and progress, progress is being made.
There are also a couple of other properties that'll make you aware of after we're off the tape, because I don't wanna call people out. But there, but there, there has been some movement from Main Street to somewhere else now.
Okay, very good.
So you need to be aware of that. And here's another property that needs to be addressed as well.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, there's, there's a significant backlog that is gonna take some time.
Yeah.
And, but we are making progress.
And I guess my question to you, Mr. CEOs, do we need to hire more people for this?
Well, I wouldn't wanna give an opinion on that quite yet. I certainly think that that's a matter that we may wanna consider at budget time.
Okay.
Councilor, go ahead.
To the CEO, through the mayor. We, we used to do a quarterly during our committee of a whole going camera, and we'd have our bylaw in here and get a quarterly update on, I guess, different problem spots. And just, just updates to council, we have to do it in camera because it, you know, you can't go out there advertising this and that. So just to give us updates so that we can give general, I guess, answers to the same residents that are calling all of us on problems that have been, you know, lingering on. And just wondering if maybe we should look at maybe getting back into that kind of routine, just to kind of give us a quarterly update on it.
Yeah, that, that's something we could look at if, if councils desire.
That's it.
Anything else? You're good, Peter? So if we go down now to five point, four point five two, it's the January to September report. And in this report, just to Councilor Cliver, they do mention derelict vehicles unsightly property.
Yeah, but I don't know which derelict vehicles those are.
Yeah, there's...
That, that's the problem, right? So when you look at a report and it says, oh, we're addressing derelict vehicles.
Okay, that's what you're referring to.
I don't, I don't know if that's the one I put in, or, or which ones did you close? Was the mine even opened? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I'm getting phone calls from people saying, you know, I put in RFS and I waited two months, and nothing's happening. I don't get an email, I don't get, I got a, I got a confirmation transaction.
All right, yeah.
Right? But nothing's changed. I don't know what to do, what do I do? And I think that's the problem with the RFS right now, is, and we, we've talked about this previously as previous council. We've talked about it as this council. And that's a challenge to our CEO, is how do you follow up? Like, how do you follow up with these people and say, okay, I can see this is what's happening on your property, and this is where we're at? We don't know. We constantly have to call Laney, or we have to call whoever's at PW. And we're only supposed to call you, because you are our only employee. So if we had some kind of report where we could see this is where it's at, then at least we could give some kind of answer. Right now, we can't give any answer.
Yeah, I just wanted to, if, if there's any way to optimize the communication and loop counselors back into a thread of the original service request would be greatly appreciated. Because, I mean, right now, if we do have the phone staff, that's a, that can be done. But it, it is time consuming, and it's, and it's utilizing a lot of people's time. If, as Councilor Cliver is mentioning, if we have access to a system that allows us to, you know, have a glance and see where things are at, that would be extremely helpful, so just putting that sentiment out there.
Even a read-only file?
Something.
If we could just read it, and just say, okay, you know, this is what's happening. Let me get, let me get back to you, I'll talk to CEO, see if there's any further progress at this time. You know, sometimes we'll see in the report that they've just been there, right? And I'll, I'll say this, at Red River Planning, we get a report, and we see everything where the person has been, what they've said, what they've done on that property. We know exactly what, if I, if you gave me a problem property that Red River Planning is, is working on, I can see in a report exactly how many times that person's been there and what status it is. So if somebody called me, I could say, this is the status, this is where we're at.
Okay, that's something we can, we can talk about and see if there's a, sort of in an efficient way...
I mean, we have more properties.
We can share information.
Yeah.
Stream it, stream it, things.
Can I just build on top of that?
Yeah, sure.
So to me, if, if a resident phones and puts logs a complaint, they, like you said, they get that, that code number?
Yeah.
Why can't this thing just have the resident where you go onto this program and type in your code number, and you can exactly see what your, your complaint is? That way, they're not phoning you or counselors?
That's true.
They can, they can track it themselves. And if they have an issue with it, then they can talk to us. But that sort of makes it more transparent for everybody to see. They just need to know what their number is, which they get confirmation of every time they...
And, and you know, what's interesting is a lot of people have called and have been told, this file is closed.
Yes.
Well, the counselor didn't know, they didn't know. So who did they inform that it was closed? Because I'm going, what do you mean it's closed? Well, it's closed, they closed it, decided not gonna do anything about it. Okay, well, we'd like to know who made that decision and why that decision was made, right?
I, I think from what I understand, sometimes they're closed. So if you make a complaint, and you make a complaint, they close one of your files because it's the same complaint.
Well, you know what, they should combine the file, merge it together, and say...
Well, they do, yeah, you're right.
Right? And then you would have two transaction codes for the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do like your idea of a code, it's private, and you only have access if you have your reference number code.
Yes, yeah. So the other, I guess, I see here, they still have like eighteen, well, eighteen open complaints on unsightly derelict vehicles. So I guess my understanding is, is sometimes they go ahead and during the winter time, they, they close these files because they don't want to add on to the days of open. That's my understanding. I'm gonna ask the, our MLO, if that's, did I understand that right?
Not to my knowledge. We don't close things over the seasons. But to your point, it does sort of skew the, skew the numbers when there's items that aren't able to be worked on over seasons like winter.
Yeah, so I'm gonna use this derelict vehicle as an example here. So from what I understand is that they would close the file for overwinter, and then they would reopen it again. But I'm wondering, why can't we be working on it during the wintertime? I know they can tow cars, but at least there can be follow-up done to see what actions are taken.
Why couldn't they tow cars?
It would, it would depend on the, the vehicle and where it is in the, in the property. So we do vehicle enforcement year round. But if it's something that can't be accessed because of snow cover, that wouldn't be something that we would enforce over winter. So it, it is dependent on the, the property.
So when would you enforce it, then? What would you do? Take, take me through the steps. You can enforce it over winter, so what would you do?
Usually, you're waiting for, for solid ground to, to get in and start towing.
That's right. But do we know where the resident is? Where he is, has he forgotten about it, is he working on something, or? So they close the file, and then you go back to him, you go back to them in May, let's say.
So the, the file wouldn't close? Okay, so it depends at what process in, in the, at what stage of the process the bylaw enforcement is in? Because we do, you know, a warning, if you will, a notice of contravention violation, and then a remedy to order. So there's different places along that, and there's options for the resident to appeal, which comes to council. So all of this has timelines set. And if, in that process, the winter season comes upon, and it's not possible for either the resident to remove the vehicle or the municipality to do the remedy to order, then it would, it would wait until spring. And we would contact the property owner and say, we are now proceeding with the order, and give a date that we would, would do that.
Okay. I'll have to think about it, because I think, you know, we had an incident here where it started off, there was a complaint. It started off in the fall time, it carried over, nothing was done, and then they went back in the springtime. And they basically started all over again. So basically, to me, I see that we lost, whatever time it was from the fall to the springtime, we lost that to say, so if we give them an order of remedy or an order of contravention, it says that we have to give them a minimum of fourteen days. Doesn't mean we have to give them fourteen days. We can, in, in November, can we not say, okay, you know, we're, we're gonna give you this order, and we expect you to do something in it by April, let's say? And then at least stays open so that whoever has it is aware of that they got this, this, this letter. And then we don't have to start over again. We can say, you guys had all winter to come up with a plan to fix up whatever you need to do. They may not be able to do it, but at least they can develop a plan, get, get the guys in. They have to hire, if they have to hire somebody, they can get them all to start up. And not that they're rushing in fourteen days to get it done. I don't know if that's possible or not.
To the mayor and to our acting CEO, when we have derelict vehicles, we have a period of time, we have a process we have to go through, right? You know, we have to give them fourteen days to clean it up, and then we give them a second notice, and then we give them final notice, right? So the whole process should take fourteen times three, right? Is that about right? Before you get to the, before you get to the third, third and final notice? That's the minimum? Forty-two days?
I, I don't have the dates in front of me, but it, it sounds...
Legislatively, I believe that's what it is, right?
Yeah, maybe, maybe not even.
Okay. So if you're giving them a final notice, and nothing is being cleaned up, you could act on it a lot earlier than wait for the winter, right? You could be acting, if you, if something comes up in the fall, you could be acting on it before the snow flies.
And, and that, in fact, is what we've been doing in this, this, sort of on the first cooping of properties now, right now we have.
Okay.
And that's why I say when we, there's a handful of properties that we made progress on and action on.
Yeah.
That's what we've been doing, is, is we are in a bit of a push to get as much cleaned up as we can before the snow flies.
So when we're in the final stage, we don't have to, like the mayor says, well, then, you know, we, we got the winter, and then the spring comes, and we have to start all over. We actually technically are not starting all over, is my understanding. Once we've issued the final, it stays in that final stage until we get it cleaned up. Is that not the case?
I'll need to verify that.
The only time that it changes...
Whether or not there's an expiry on that or not.
We, we, we should check that, because if you're in the final stage, you're in the final stage. The only time that you, you don't come out of that final stage is when, let's say, let's say I say, well, you know, Mike, you've got two derelict vehicles on your property, get them out, here's your final notice. Mike moves the derelict vehicles, okay? He served the notice, everything's hunky-dory. Mike brings them back two months later. Then I have to start all over again.
No, no, you don't.
Nope.
That's changed.
Okay.
But it does, if it's a reoccurring issue, that contravention just continues on.
Okay, so if we've, we've given them, as long as we've issued the remedy of contravention, that stays in place until that place is cleaned up. Is that correct? That's what you're saying?
The order.
Yeah. We should check on that. We should check on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not sure if there's an expiry and I, I would wanna confirm that. Because I thought we, I thought we did reissue some in the spring and I'm not sure why we would have done that if there wasn't an expiration.
Right.
So I, I want to, I wanna verify that.
And then the other thing we've talked about is counsel is when there's repeat offenses. So let's say we ask you to clean up your, you come back, you dump some more vehicles, we're back at the same spot, we tell you, get them out of here. But let's say you don't get them out, for every day, we've talked about for every day that you don't clean up, we can find. And that's one thing we were looking at, is starting to find people. So if they don't clean up, we'll clean up for you. If you come back, we'll find you. And that's something that we've been, we've been kind of tossing around for a long time. We just have never got to it.
And, and to be clean, when we clean up for you, we invoice them for the cost.
Yeah, and, and I believe we also have a bylaw that allows us to put in other taxes if they don't pay.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Counselor Bichetti?
I, I think we all have the same issue. I think there should be, maybe we should set up some time for even an educational briefing on this to see what's changed and whatnot on, on both ends to bring the CEO up to speed on what the bylaw is and to bring us up to where we have to start over again and where we don't have to. This is more than just a conversation during meetings.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a big issue and one that we said was one of our biggest issues even during interview is that we want this cleaned up, so.
So I see under Public Works, last item, internal PW, items to be completed, spring, summer. There was three open, two closed. I'm not too sure what that is. What does that mean? It's on the January to September.
Okay. I'm sorry, what page are you on?
The West St. Paul report statistics.
Yeah, there's page numbers on the bottom.
Must be the second page. No, let's see, second page. Second page, yes, underneath the public works, forty percent public works.
Yeah.
And then right on the bottom, last item says internal PW items to be completed, spring, summer. They have five. What's that?
Internal. So your question is, what are those items?
Not specifically, but what does that mean? I, I think I know what.
I think, I think that means there's five items, or there's five items and three of them are still open and two of them have been closed. There were five over the, over the period of the report.
And, and they have to be done between, in spring and summer or?
Oh.
It does say items to be completed, spring, summer.
Summer, oh, okay. Oh, please explain to me that these, these included things like boulevard repairs, ditch repairs and culvert, so it is summer work?
Oh, okay.
Spring, summer work.
So now those, those are no longer open, those are, those, is, is that what this means now that these requests for service have been closed and they're waiting now to spring, summer?
No, they're still, they're still open.
Okay. I'll continue. I think I know what it means then. Thank you. Anyone else got any questions? So I gotta go back to four point three. Counselor Paktkan has something to say about infrastructure utility committee.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and apologize for missing that there. I just wanted to ask the CEO, I know it's been really good work that's been happening with regards to road repair within the RM and generally residents should be proud of that. I just, I know that we're in the tail end of the season and I just wanna see if there's a status update on Jackman, Willis and Northumberland. Those roads, I see some signs have gone up on the side of the road. I just wasn't sure what, what that was and perhaps the CEO can provide a bit of an update. That would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to mobilize by next week and expectation is that those roadworks, all roadworks will be completed by end of month.
Are those roads subcontracted?
Yes, they're to, Maple Leaf is the contractor.
Okay.
Maple Leaf was actually digging today on Northumberland, on McPhillips. I saw it dug out already, so.
Oh, good.
As a further question to Counselor Paktkan, Rivers Mariners Trail, was that done? It was supposed to be done October fifth.
Rivers Mariners, the roadway itself?
There was big cracks in the road that they want, that they were supposed to fill by October fifth.
I'll have to follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll just go back to. Six point one, Rogers Communication Proposal Installation, they have something for information only. I believe it's an open house that the public noticed that they have going out.
Are we hosting that or are they hosting that? Or are they asking us to host that, Mayor?
I think they're hosting it.
Yeah, they're advising of it.
Okay.
This is their notice that they sent out and they have up until October twenty eighth to respond.
Okay, so where is the, is the public? Where's it gonna be? Where people can give.
Oh, sorry.
Give their response. Like you're saying, this is a public open house for that?
Public consultation.
Okay, so where's the public consultation taking place? Is it just nowhere and people are supposed to send in?
Yeah, send it in by writing. Yeah, send it in by writing, it says.
Send it in by writing.
Yeah. And they have an address on the bottom where they have to send it to?
Have we already submitted our concerns as a RM?
Yes.
My understanding is we've done that a long time ago.
Yes, the, the municipality did and this is the, the result was the, the proposed location has changed from what was originally submitted.
Oh, so as a result of that, they have to, they have to do the public consultations again? Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm not clear if, if this would have happened regardless of a location change, but.
It's twelve oh one Miller Road. Is this, is the, the location member we were dealing with?
Yeah, the word did you find that changed?
It's at the end. But, so yeah, so as we dealt with this, it sounds like we're doing this again.
Yeah.
And just looking at it really quickly, it looks like, I guess it looks like they're looking, it looks like they're coming back with what we were suggesting as a location, which is odd.
I can't see what you're seeing, but okay.
See, when I see this here.
Here?
Yeah.
That's what it is? Oh, there we go. Okay.
I guess what was the reach of their public consultation, their notice here? How far out did they, do you know how they, I mean, we got this, I know that, but are they posting it in the paper?
I, I don't know what their requirements are.
Mayor, could we send this out in an email blast so that our, our residents know about it?
I think we should.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's even possible to ask.
It's a public consultation, so it's not like we're breaching anything.
No, I know.
To ask the consultant to evolve surface strategies to come in as a delegation and we can ask them some questions regarding this. I certainly have questions. It sounds like we dealt with this earlier in the year.
Yeah.
Extensively and now we're dealing with it again.
Well, I, I, I'm wondering if they have already taken our consideration because they have moved it, which is what they've done. And, you know, before they hired these consultants and now Shaw is doing it as themselves, as a corporation to do it. It may be part of their due diligence.
Rogers.
Rogers, sorry, yes, you're right, Rogers is doing this.
Well, maybe we should get clarification on that.
Yeah.
Either way, I think it still should go out in the email blast so that people can respond if they so choose.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't wanna be accused of withholding information.
So we'll send out an email blast then, if you don't mind?
What's interesting, just as a note on page two of their communication, it says here, in terms of zoning, they say, the RM of West St. Paul has not adopted a tower sighting bylaw regarding the installation of towers in this zone. Well, perfect. This is something that we can do then.
Yeah, I think we have.
It's an interesting statement. We talked about it.
We talked about it, we talked about it, yeah.
But we can actually know that.
And I think that's why, uh, previous towers were just put through by Red River Planning because there was no referral to the bylaw. There was no bylaw to refer to.
Well, and we all know how Red River Planning has West St. Paul's best interest at heart.
No comment. But yeah, we should get a bylaw together for that.
Can we just maybe, as, as just adjunct to that, maybe ask our municipal services officer and our CEO to provide counsel with some information in terms of the bylaw construction, of a possible bylaw draft?
There must be other municipalities that already have a bylaw that we could use as a template, I would think, right?
Based on our previous discussion of having, I mean, we talked about no residential within, what did we say, a thousand meters?
Yeah.
Basically a kilometer of a new cell tower?
Counselor Cabal?
See, you know what, what it says here, you cannot install a. Well, this is not agricultural. This is, this, this is like right on the river, right on the revolver's property.
That's A eighty though. It's zoned A eighty.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Cabal.
Yeah, it's interesting that, you know, other ones have not come to council and after this, you know, when we made quite a fuss about this one and had them change it, then all of a sudden they put in there that we don't have a policy. So I think we do them a favor and oblige them and make a policy very quickly so that, you know, we don't have any more surprise ones pop up. I know of at least two, actually three, three that have popped up that, you know, this council and previous council didn't know anything about. You know, I think in best interest of our residents, I think it's approved that we do that.
Yep, didn't even come to council.
Exactly.
We weren't even informed, yeah.
I believe what we were told is we have no say.
Yeah, I think it went across somebody else's desk and we didn't get any input. Okay.
Anyone, anyone else? So then we'll go to seven, question period. If you have any questions. Armin, want to come forward, picture name, address?
Well, I'm Louick thirteen seventy-seven Miller Road. I just wanna go on the record, it's not so much a question that I have for counsel, but in regard to this cell tower, I was the one who brought it forth to, to counsel because I was told by Red River Planning that it was, it was a federal decision and it had nothing to do with municipality, it had nothing to do with provincial, it was all federal. I did more digging, I finally found out it's a hundred percent municipal. They're the ones ultimately that make the call, but Red River Planning, the way I understood it, bypassed the municipality a hundred percent. So that's why I got you guys involved and you, you, you made the change for us, which was awesome. But like I said, I wanna go on the record, I've received multiple, multiple emails from Evolve starting in April up to July, all stating that this tower could not have been moved because of St. Andrews Airport flight paths. I can, it, it just keeps reiterating that because this is what we kept asking them, why are they putting it so close to our property? Well, this is the only place, St. Andrews Airport. Now that this new proposal's come out, you guys, you guys, I'm, I'm under the understanding that the council spoke to Rogers or Evolve and you compromised or, or, that's my understanding. And they, they decided, they decided that, that they're gonna move the tower and that, that was the answer. So basically they told you, we're gonna move the tower farther east, so they, they've done this, but they probably told you that, that St. Andrews Airport was on board with this. Up until today, I talked to St. Andrews Airport management, they know nothing about this tower proposal. And it's a two-hundred meter tower and I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but a few years ago, St. Richardson Airport changed their flight paths. That's why we have more planes flying over our ward, which changed the flight path for St. Andrews Airport. So they stay much lower and they, they go right above twelve oh one Miller Road now. There's three training facilities, flight training facilities that fly out of St. Andrews Airport that go on those circuits for, it's called touch and goes, right? They don't wanna climb very high, they wanna stay low because you're burning fuel. And they go constantly on Saturdays, Sundays, evenings, daytime, everything, and they fly right over twelve oh one Miller Road. I don't, I find it unbelievably hard to understand why they're putting a two-hundred-foot cell tower right in the middle of a flight path. And they told you, and positively told you that it was approved by St. Andrews Airport, but they don't even know about it.
Can I respond to your question?
Sure.
Your, your question was, were we aware that this is a hundred percent a municipality issue? So what, how did you come to that or how did you?
I spoke with, I spoke with a federal department and they clued me all in because that's, everybody wants to go, right? They decide, they decide, chief outright said municipality. So that's when I approached Red River Planning and then they sort of, well, it's a municipality can, of course you can. That makes the sense. Like, how can it be somebody in Ottawa deciding where these towers are going, right?
Yeah, and it makes sense what you're saying because on that communication from Rogers, they're saying that the RM hasn't, hasn't developed a sighting, sighting plan. So that, it does, it does sound, it does apps.
So I guess my, my, I, I've already sort of asked you the question that I have is, did Rogers or Evolve state that they have St. Andrews Airport authority? When they spoke with you, when they were, when they were.
I don't think that really matters to us, really, right?
No, but it matters in the, in the, in the, in the fact that is being not forthcoming. It's, it's, it's a, if you, if you, if some, something were to happen where there's a small light plane hits that tower and you backed, you backed this up. Okay.
All I can say is that they did mention, there was a reference to.
I'm on record by saying.
There was a reference saying that there's something, something to do with, they had to look, they have to consider St. Andrews Airport vicinity. That's all they said.
Okay, but like I said, the, St. Andrews Airport management knows nothing about the second proposal. The first proposal they do, but the second one they don't. So I'm just, just wanted to bring it forward.
When you say second one, what second one are you talking about?
This one that's in front of you right now.
Well, I think this is the one that we proposed.
No, we proposed, we asked for.
The first one was right on our property line.
Oh, the one that we, this is the one that we proposed.
Yeah, to go farther east. And like I said, the emails all state, they, they could never move east.
But I think, Mr. Louick, we've been very forthcoming with you that.
No, I understand.
We, we said that we spoke to the Rogers rep at the FCM conference.
Okay, I.
And that's how we got the information. In fact, it was Counselor Bichetti that did that and Counselor Campbell, yeah, the three of us actually.
Yeah, we all ended up at the same.
I understand and, and like I said, we're very, very appreciative, but I'm just trying to make you understand that moving it east is, is, it's, it's still, it's getting closer to the fight, flight paths of, of, and like Counselor Campbell says, that's not your, your, it has nothing to do with you. I just want to be on the record that that, it does have, like, it's, it's right there, right?
That'll be between, that'll be between Rogers.
This isn't what we proposed. We asked for it to be moved. We set a parameter and this is what they came back with. And they said, and I believe they did say, this is the maximum we can move it to work with the airport. There was something said without going right into the.
Yeah, that's fine, that could be.
Into their spiel.
Like I said, I've, I've spoke with St. Andrews Airport, they know nothing about this.
I just wanna say this isn't what we proposed. At least we proposed, I believe, Counselor Paktkan said.
Kilometer.
Yeah, a kilometer away.
We're surrounded by.
And they turned around and said, this is where we could put it to make it work with the flight plan.
But then again, this is your opportunity to have more public consultation.
Yeah, no, it's awesome.
So now, now if we send this out by email, then you go in there and you give your public consultation.
I'm, I'm already emailing the, in the comments for Evolve.
Okay, all right.
But it doesn't look like Evolve has much, it looks like it's. But it doesn't look like Evolve has much, it looks like it's now right from Rogers.
Says it right at the bottom to Counselor Evolve comments, yeah, it actually says West St. Paul now, too.
Yeah, it does.
So they are considered, they're putting you into it now, too, because it was never before like that. So I'm just, I'm just giving you guys some knowledge, like, this is, yes, okay, it's farther away from a resident, residential house, but it's, it's more of a safety concern now, because it's, it's more in a, in a, in, not, not that it's, it has nothing, has nothing to do with you, I understand that.
You're trying to push the blame on the West, like, West St. Paul will not be held responsible for, we're not building the tower.
No, I get that, I get that.
So, I, I just, I just wanted to make that clear to you, right? Because you've been saying that we're gonna be held responsible.
Yeah, so what...
If, if you contacted the airport...
I'm not saying you're being held, held responsible, I just wanted to be on record saying, it's, I live right below, right, and I see Sessna's going at 200 feet, 300 feet, right above my property.
Yeah, let, let me talk now, please, if, if you've talked to St. Andrews Airport, you've informed them, I assure you we can talk to Ms. Shaw and our CAO, have you guys received any calls from St. Andrews Airport? If they haven't, and you've informed them of this, then I, I can't see them being a problem.
Inform them?
Well, yeah, you, you said you've talked to whoever at St. Andrews Airport, right?
I just asked them if they're aware of the second proposal, that's all I asked.
Well, that's...
So they're aware of the first proposal?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so they know that there's a tower going in the vicinity? I mean, we moved it over a little bit, right?
Yeah, we moved it over.
Yeah, so they're aware of the towers going up?
Yeah, they're, they're not aware of the second proposal.
Right, okay.
Because the, the Evolve keeps stating that it could not, never be moved, because it was, we get into the flight path, so now they moved it closer into the flight path, and I realize it has nothing to do with you guys, but that, I'm just trying to understand it, like...
Yeah, well, that's why there's a public consultation.
That's awesome, it's gonna be a public consultation.
Yeah.
That's good. So, I, I guess, did you get a, a copy of this public notification?
Nope.
Okay.
Because I'm not in within the 200 meters of it anymore.
No, no, we're, we're gonna send out it by, by email blast.
Public consultation, it was in the self-kept record.
It was?
Yeah.
So in a public consultation, it does talk about the parameters that they used, the aeronautical obstruction marketing requirements, which is point five, and point three, evaluation of existing structures and site selections. They don't mention St. Andrews Airport or anything else, but they do look at it, and they do talk to Transport Canada about certain things here, from what I see.
Transport Canada, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, airport, St. Andrews Airport falls underneath that jurisdiction, so...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just coming up here for information, to let you guys know that, what has changed in, around that area.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else, any more questions? By all means, come forward.
Norma Alberg, 312 Avon Avenue, have a question regarding the first responder service agreement, but first, just a comment that I agree totally with what Mr. Lewick was saying, and I did not here and put any blame on the council, I think that the more opportunity that all of you have to become more informed on any issue, the better it's going to be for you. If somebody stands beside the horse, the horse's mouth, he lives beside that one property, he knows it better than anyone else in, in the municipality, for the rifle club, for the tower, for all of it, so it's good to just sit and listen to what their daily experiences are.
Ms., Ms. Alberg, I, I think what the point that we were trying, I think the point Mr. Lewick was trying to make was, is St. Andrews aware of the, the proposal that we put back? And, and it's really, and I, I'll, I'll say this, from my perspective, it's really not our responsibility to go to St. Andrews and let them know about it, it's Rogers' responsibility to go to St. Andrews and let them know what we have proposed. There should be a communication with everybody in the circle, right? And I'm hoping that they're doing that, but that's what I think we were trying, at least I was trying to say, is, it is Rogers' responsibility to talk to St. Andrews about the repositioning.
Mm-hmm, and I think the caution that I interpreted from Mr. Lewick is that when the agency has said one thing, and then their action is something else, so they've said they can't move it east because of A, B, and C, and then they move it east with A, B, and C, he's giving you a caution that perhaps not all the information is there.
They're contradicting, they're contradicting what they said in one, and then they're doing it in the other, that's not what you said.
And I think he's just giving you that caution, sort of stale earth, and it's for information for you, and as the municipality grows and wants to be better and a good municipality, due diligence, you have the opportunity, you know, before something happens, to be more diligent about it, you know, tonight we're buying the new plow, but we don't have most of the sidewalks made yet, so that, that's a, that's a time when you kind of step forward and say, well, let's get ready, so I think get ready for many of the things. For my question on the first responder service agreement, for me, there's a large gap in the information, because following the mayor's questions, I'm thinking back to, I think around May or June, when Chief Yakel came and spoke at length to the council about implications that were coming about as a result of the formation of the new paramedic college, and that it, it had significant impact on the cost of training for our, for our fire volunteers. So, I think whatever that was about, I don't know how that was then resolved, so that's a missing piece of the puzzle that I think is fairly critical here, because if that was brought forward, I believe at the time you and Mayor Yakel, or Fire Chief Yakel, were going to be going to some meeting, and there must have been some resolution, because if this is status quo of last year's agreement, that's certainly not what he was suggesting at the time, and I think as well, he, he stated that time, and I don't recall if it was in the room or, or outside the room, but that there had been changes with the ambulance availability as well, so again, first responder, so that previously, the status of the ambulance station was that if the ambulance was called out, somebody was called in from another area to come and sit in case a second call came in, that's no longer it. If the ambulance is out, the ambulance is out, you can wait, or your ambulance will come from somewhere else, so I think all of these questions about what is the availability of first response here, and what are the implications for costing for us, I think those do need to be answered. Do we know any of that?
Yes, when we went to the meeting, I'll ask our Laney, because she was there, too, there was a, there was parameters set up, and the issue was, is that how are these parameters affected municipalities like ours and smaller municipalities? Everyone left the meeting that, you know, the parameters were still set in place, but they were gonna look to see what can be done for the smaller communities, because if you only have one, two firefighters in the community, and they both need to be certified at whatever it was, it was, I think it was about $10,000, right, person for training, they don't have a budget for that, so how do they, how do they, how do they act according to that? And that was one of the things that the College of Paramedics was gonna take back and work through. One of the things that the College of Paramedics did say was, is that the standards that we have in Manitoba are the lowest in Canada, so which is why they ramped up to where they were from 72 hours to 300 and some odd hours, so I could understand where their concern is with that, because they want to make sure that their staff is, people with certification can do what they're supposed to do, and they're probably held higher to a higher standard than what it is now, so generally, we see that as a municipality, is that we can accommodate some of those, but I guess the question is, is, what we have to think of is, how many firefighters will we be training? And from what Chief Yakel has told us already, is that we're not in immediate crisis right now, for now, because we have enough staff on the fire department that is certified underneath the Paramedics Association, or, and I think there was one that was gonna be renewing his license, right? So we're comfortable with that, but going forward, it's a concern that we as a municipality have to have. Counselor Alberg?
Yeah, I think when I spoke to Chief Yakel, he said that it was the new recruits that hadn't been trained yet, but the other thing that I think we have to consider, and we should probably look into it, is I think the training's $10,000, right? Just the course itself?
The hours that it would take to take the course, yeah, I believe that's what it was, if you round it out to 300 hours, right? And if you figure you're paying someone $25 an hour to attend this course...
Yeah, so we'd have to pay them per hour plus the course, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's a very expensive proposition.
And the issue is, is these guys, these individuals are part-timers, how do they take a course, was the other issue that came out, how do they take a course on full-time? Do they have, what, 320 hours, that's like eight weeks, they have to take eight weeks off of work to do this?
Yeah.
So that was all the challenges they brought forward to it, and I think Chief Yakel did an interview on CTV not too long ago, CTV and...
CJOB, I believe?
Yeah, it was, so...
And then it's also the retention, so you spend $10,000 on, to train Counselor Patakan to be a first responder, well, what if Counselor Pax again moves next year? Well, we've just spent $10,000, and it's out the window, so that's a concern of mine. If I'm gonna spend $10,000 to, to train somebody, I want to know they're gonna be there for at least, at least two or three years, so I can at least make my money back for those two or three years, right?
So if I understand what the agreement says, is that there was certain parameters, you need to have one person for one vehicle, and that you're supposed to notify shared health, the number of people that you have, if you're, if they're available, and then you also have to notify them if for some reason when you don't have anybody available, so that they can know when they do their, when they have to do, when they get the 911 call, they know what they have to do as opposed to waiting at the scene, I mean...
But how do you know if you don't have someone?
The municipality has to let them know.
So whoever gets the call has to say, I don't have a paramedic available right now?
I think we would have to, I think we have to look at that service agreement a little bit more, but I think the municipality is supposed to notify them in advance, they don't notify them on the time of the call.
Yeah, because, like, our guys get called in, right?
Yeah.
So the call goes out, and whoever's in the area responds.
So according to the service agreement, they get a two-minute call, if no one answers, then they get another 10-minute call, and then they get another 10-minute call, and if they don't hear anybody, then they go to the next step, whatever that step is.
Mutual aid.
Mutual, pardon?
Probably go to the mutual aid, then.
Well, yeah, I guess they go to the closest one, I think that's what it says in the, from my recall of the agreement, what it said, so, I mean, answer your questions.
I think so.
Yes.
Is, do you have any understanding why they would move that sort of a contract out of the local authority, the Eastern Interlake and onto shared health?
Shared health is now the overriding organization of all the regional organizations, that's why, and I think some of those callsigns fallen into shared health now, I think that was the other reason.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any more questions? Anyone? None? None? Okay, good. We'll go down to in-camera. Okay, we're coming out of camera, we're gonna call this meeting adjourned at 8:35 on Thursday evening. Thank you very much for that.
Tuesday.
Tuesday evening, Tuesday evening, thank you.